Our story began in 1991. Over time, the mortgage industry has experienced many changes, but our core values here at CIS have always remained the same: character, integrity, and service. You don't need to be a mortgage expert to get a great financial plan. You just need to work with one. Our focus and dedication have allowed us to help thousands of families reach their dream of homeownership. Whether it be refinancing your current home, buying a manufactured home, or purchasing investment property, we have a product for you. We invite you to find out more by visiting our website at CISHomeLoans.com or like us on Facebook. CIS Home Loans: Mortgage loans made simple. Equal housing lender.
Again, our meeting at 6:00 PM, and we'll call the meeting to order. Before we have our invocation and our pledge, just wanted to remind the folks of a couple of upcoming events that involve our community in a big way. Our Jager Brown Arts Festival will be held in Hamilton at the Tom Nigby Building, March the 7th and 8th. That's on Saturday and Sunday until sometime in the afternoon, Sunday afternoon. I don't have the exact cutoff time, but anyway, that's upcoming, March 7th and 8th, the Jager Brown Arts Festival. A lot of preparation going into getting ready for that. April 1st is the upcoming date for the 2020 census to begin. You can go online, I understand, on April 1st, and answer the six or seven simple questions that have to do with the census and completing yours. You can have that completed in a few minutes if you go online to do that. Otherwise, you can do it with a form, or you can be called on. I understand maybe it's your house if you don't do it one way or the other. Someone will come out to see you, maybe ask you to participate. Very important that all of our people participate in the 2020 census. I can't illustrate that enough. We have a congressional seat at stake. If we lose too much population or don't gain in population like we should as compared to other states. And we also have our federal taxes, $1,660 odd dollars per person that's counted, that would come to us in federal assistance through taxations. We need to make sure that all of our people are counted in the census. This time, we'll pause for our invocation, our pledge of allegiance. Father, we come to you tonight thankful in our hearts for this good day of life. Lord, we thank you for your many blessings that you bestow on our community. Lord, we ask that you continue with us, that we may prosper in this area and grow. And, Lord, that we may see good things happen in Hamilton and Marion County. We ask you to be with us as we conduct business in a sense due to the people of this community. And if we do it in the right manner, it'll be pleasing on your side. Christ's name I pray. We will have a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business tonight is a public hearing that we'll be hosting for the folks at Max Minute Mart. I'm going to ask Angela to read our notice of the public hearing, and then we'll approve. If there's no objections, the matter's a hand.
We have a recommendation for the mayor and the city council to approve the transfer of ownership of the alcohol license of Max Minute Mart. That's located at 215 Betcher Avenue West. It will be from Sri Krishana Incorporated, owned by Ajakamur Patel. The new owners will be ASR Business Incorporated, owned by Arif Ratani. This will allow Mr. Ratani to continue with the already established business that is there. We already allowing them to sell. They have a lounge retail liquor class two, which is a package store, off-premise only, retail beer, off-premise only, and retail table wine, off-premise only. Mr. Ratani has completed all of the requirements to transfer his ownership with licensings with the ABC Board. I've spoken with them in Florence, and they're just waiting for y'all's approval and for us to have this public hearing to see if anyone was here to speak either for or against the transfer of this license.
Is there anyone here tying to this matter? Who want to discuss it?
I don't have any objection.
We need to bring it into a motion for approval of this license being up for the Max Minute Mart and these individuals requesting. Herb made a motion. We need a second.
I'll say it.
Wade, second. All in favor of approval? Thank you. Okay. We'll need a motion then to conclude this public hearing.
I'll make it.
Jean made a motion. We concluded. We need a second.
I'll say it.
Herb, second. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. On our regular council meeting, first, we'd need a recommendation to approve the minutes of the February 3rd, 2020 council meeting. We need a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Jean made a motion. We need a second.
I'll say it.
Wade, second. All in favor of approving our minutes? Thank you. The second item is a recommendation to remove the addition from the employee pen book that was added at the December 21st, 2015 city council meeting requiring city employees to pay for any additional testing if the employee did not pass tests on their first test. Due to testing for certification being required for certain positions with the city of Hamilton, the city will pay for additional testing if needed for the employee to fulfill the requirements of the job for which they are hired, removing the restriction of the one-time limit. That recommendation will be to remove the one-time limit only for testing.
How many are we going to pay for here? I thought we had a... We're not going to pay five or six times, are we?
Well, we'll have a...
I think this, we would.
We will have a discretion of the supervisor type situation after we remove this. There won't be a limit placed, but at the current time limit, we just have one time. And then if they don't pass, we...
Yeah, I know that. I think we need more than one time, but I don't think we need five times either or six, you know? And cost, what is it? $350 per case, per time?
Well, it's costing really good...
Or the water test. What, $3.25?
Do you have any suggestions on this?
We talked about it in the work session the other day about just taking the one limit, one-time limit off, and then from that point on, maybe the supervisor and the mayor could limit how many times they can take it. That way, we... If you put five times, you know, you've got to let that guy take it five times. But if you don't have a set number on that, you could evaluate that person at any time and say, he's not going to be able to pass it. So, you know, we...
What y'all were recommending then is it would be up to y'all whether they took it again?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I'd be satisfied with that person, but I know somebody should be able to say it. Because we want somebody to make it, if they're taking it, five times, $1,500. You know, if you... If that's what you're recommending?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I believe you could tell you asked three or four times if it's so fast or something. We got a motion on the table to remove the one-time limit out of the handbook. Need a second.
I'll say it.
Now, a second. All in favor? All opposed? Passage four to one. I've done a little research on this next item. We were considering having an appraisal done on the Bedford Industrial Park property that the county is considering using as a jail site. I did talk with our chairman, Mr. Wade Nixon. The numbers he had remembered as being customary for lands in the Bedford Park were about $10,000 per acre. If y'all would rather have an appraisal done, you think we're pouring up into it, to have an appraisal, would that be the desire of the council?
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay. We could go ahead and have it appraised, or we can work with the numbers that the industrial board would remember. It's just the...
Do we have access to the appraisal that the state had done when they did their land over there?
We should have that.
So, can we see those numbers before we decide?
I've got it in here. The state paid about $930 for roughly 40 acres, but it was also that spec building was, I think, a little over half of it as well. But we can get that.
State pays what? I mean, what was your...
About $930, I think it was, for just shot 40 acres, like 39, like 3 acres.
$9,000?
$930,000. $930,000? For the entire lot, but that included the spec?
Oh, including the build.
That's correct.
I think it's the state.
I really liked Jean's suggestion that we look at those numbers that was on the appraisal before we just order up another that we'll have to pay for. Being keeping, I'd like to recommend that maybe we table this motion until we table this recommendation for our motion until we get a chance to view that information. Since we've got some numbers popping up here, it might be something we could work with.
But in other words, personally, I think we're going to have to be careful about what we charge the county for if we're going to keep on using the county jail to put prisoners in. And that's going to be a problem if we ask them an outrageous price and we're the one that's actually using. I have a pretty good idea. We're have the most prisoners than anybody.
Most what we do.
Yeah, and...
But we do pay for them.
Yeah.
I mean, we pay for prisoners, so it's not like they're doing... I mean, it's... He's not free.
No, no, it's not. I'm not asking them to be. But I'm saying, if they're going to be... We don't need to... For the land, they don't have the money to build a jail. That's exactly what it amounts to. The better deal we can give them on the land, the better off they're going to be. That's my understanding. They do not have the money. It's going to push them, in other words, to build a jail. I just don't know. I don't want to... Because they can come right back on us if we ask them an outrageous price. They can come right back on us, and we'll have to build our own jail. They'll... They can ask us whatever they want to for prisoner we put in there. They're in charge. They got in charge of that, right?
I think it's going to be a county jail, yes?
Yeah, that's what I'm speaking of. And I personally think we need to work with them and work fairly with them because they don't have the money to build it actually. And we need to do something to work with them if we can because I'd hate for them to come back after and the other people, the seniors, paying about three times for they force the city to build their own jail is what I'm... I don't know how anybody else feels. I'd like to know.
I would like to do as much as we can and be helpful in the matter. It's going to take lots of money to build a jail. Do you think a $10 million project might be a jail?
We hope to be a little less, but that's...
And 5 acres from us?
Yes, sir.
That's one of that. I think so. Personally, I don't know how much we got in the property, but personally, rather than doing a lot more things, we're going to ask for... I'd rather just give them the 5 acres and let them build as long as the jail's built there and we don't have to put in more money.
We still need to establish some sort of a price if it's gifted land.
Okay. I heard to get the appraisal just to have an idea of what the value is and then we can work out for that to work with the county department.
Well, how much is the appraisal going to cost? Should we do this?
Well, if we just table it and look at what... I think the Aldott appraisal is probably a pretty good launch.
And I mean, I think that's the best idea that you said if we get an appraisal. Meaning, were you meaning, look at...
Aldotts.
Okay. You're not suggesting going ahead with the... I make a motion. We table this and look at Aldott's appraisal and take into consideration what the industrial board has as a set price and go from there.
You have a motion.
I'll say it.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? And this motion will be to table this to a future date. All in favor?
I just think it would be fair to them.
I think this is a good move at this point. I think we need to go carefully and we really do have to play, Jean. I agree with a lot of the points you made there about our future with the county on the jail. In our last couple of sessions and our workshops, we noted based on numbers that were produced for us by Mr. Allen Capel who are accounted and also working in conjunction with Rodney. Significant losses in our water and sewer departments for undercharges, I would say, on the product we're producing. We're selling water cheaper than we can produce it, and we're losing even more money at the wastewater treatment plant around close to $400,000, I believe, from last year's made up out of the general fund. It's actually much over $400,000, Rodney, I want you to stand up and address the fact finding and kind of the recommendations of those adjustments tonight to us and then we may have a question and answer session before we vote, but I want us to try to put your department in a break-even status through this action tonight.
I spent many hours with Allen and Sandra at the gas office trying to figure out some rates, some water rates, sewer rates, that type of stuff. And we kind of went to the source of the problem. The source of the problem being on water rates is the current scale that we're using to sell water. We have a minimum of up to 2,000 gallons of water. That's the basic rate. That rate is $20.38. When Allen and I sat down and started going up in scale, the first thing I got Allen to do is figure out how much it was costing us to produce water because that was her bottom line of how we're going to get out of the prices we're in. He came up with that number below $5 per thousand for producing water. And on our current scale, the current scale is up to $2,000, I mean, up to 2,000 gallons of water. The basic rate is $20.38. After, from 2,000 to 10,000 gallons, it starts dropping. The rate per thousand starts dropping on the scale. Then from 10,000 to 25,000 drops even more. And when you get over 25,000, 50,000, the scale keeps dropping. We're getting... We've got down to the point where over 100,000 gallons of water, we're selling it for $1.52 per thousand, and it's costing us $5 per thousand to produce. That's where we're losing our money. And that's where we came up with a plan to stop losing money. The plan we came up with was to charge $5 per thousand after the minimum bill. The minimum would not be affected if we go this route on the water side. The minimum water bill would stay the same. Then we got to looking at our sewer and how much money we were losing on the sewer side. And the sewer currently is 50% of whatever the water is. And another problem with that is we have about 3,500 customers on water. We only have about 1,140 on sewer. And they're only being charged half of whatever the water is. If you run those numbers up, that's why we're losing a whole lot more on sewer than we are water. To get that rate changed, to get us back in the black on sewer, we proposed to go from 50% of whatever the water is to 100% of whatever the water is. Basically, all your utilities are going to this. I ran numbers going 60 on residential, 80 on commercial. And the increase with those numbers didn't add up to what we lost last year. So, the only significant way Allen and I could come up with getting out of the red on sewer would be to increase those rates up to 100% of whatever the water is.
Whatever your water bill is, that's what you sue.
Yes, sir.
Keep in mind that your minimum users will not... If you have a household that operates for 2,000 gallons or less, you will not be affected by this rate change. But if every 1,000 gallons of water that you use after the minimum amount of 2,000, you pay $5 per thousand there going forward for any amount of usage that you would incur each month.
If you're not on the sewer?
If you're not on sewer. If you're on sewer... Right currently, if you're on sewer, your minimum bill is $48.39. That's $20.38 plus the tax on the water, which comes to $21.20. Then your sewer is $10.19. Garbage is $17, and your minimum bill is $48.39. Going with 100% on sewer, it would be the $20.38 for the water plus 82 cents tax, which makes it $21.20 on the water. And it would be $20.38 for sewer because you don't tax sewer. And then you add the 17 for the garbage. Your minimum bill with sewer would be $58.58.
Still, that's in the cable bill. For essential services, that's still good value. I'm going to recommend that we go with the proposal that Rodney has just laid out for us to get it to the water department to a break-even for the first time in many, many years. And that would be leaving the minimum bill the same for 2,000 gallon users, selling the order at $5 for every thousand. After that, sewer users would have a light bill for their sewer, same as their water. But that's the tax, as Rodney mentioned. And $17 for each household that has garbage. They all will all... Water meters, households have a garbage bill. Is that correct, Rodney?
That's their exemption.
There are some exemptions.
Yes.
And those have to be certified exemptions?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that would be the recommendation from the mayor's office. If we agree with that, we'd like to give an emotion to vote on it.
I'm tired of listening to you say that. Hey, everybody, I was feeling bad. But we can't keep on... I'll make a motion.
We got a motion. And then a second so we can vote.
I'll say it.
All right. That brings it to the vote. Those in favor of making the changes that's proposed by Rodney, would need to raise your right hand. And those opposed, motion passed four to one.
And one of the reasons I'm opposing is because there is nothing in writing. It was strictly what you said tonight. So, there's nothing in writing, you know, to actually go with this. There is not a written proposal anywhere. We are... And I agree that the rates do have to be raised. We have got to do something. But we are raising these to less than what it costs us to produce steel. And even though it's just 40 cents, eventually, it does catch up with the base rate and the lack of increase being less than what it costs. But I'm also not sure... You know, I asked the other day about the overage for the 50,000 gallons or more with the sewer, and that never had been addressed. And I think the comment was, nobody goes over that. But in fact, they do.
They do.
So, I mean, that hasn't been addressed. So, obviously, that's staying the same because that wasn't mentioned in your little thing. I think that, you know, definitely the rates have to be increased, but I'm not sure that this was the best plan. And I know you and Allen punched all this into the computer. I punched all mine out on a piece of paper. So, I'm, you know... I've worked and I figured and I've thought. And 100% for commercial and 100% for residential, that's going to be a big increase to some people. I know on just one of my water bills last year, it's going to increase my water $18.68 for that same bill. And if I were on sewer, it would increase it a total of $49.33. And I'm not just quite sure this was the best route. And the fact that I do think some of our policies need to be changed and the policy should have been changed along with the numbers. But anyway, those are just my thoughts.
Well, we went... And the reason we did this on the water, we went to the root of the problem.
Right. But you're still charging less than what it costs to produce.
Not if you figure in the... Not if you figure in the minimum.
Once you reach a certain point, though, you're going to be...
If you figure in the minimum, it's over, well, it's...
To a point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because with my bill, with the, what you proposed, and with what I paid, it was $14.39 profit, you know, with this new, whereas before, we were way back in. So, you know, anyway, those are just my thoughts, so...
We ran my bill at the gas office, using the $5,000 per thousand after the minimum, and my bill went up $3,000 or something.
I used more water than you did.
Well...
But anyway, I mean, it's fair, so I just want y'all to know what I'm thinking.
Well, what I'm thinking is this, you can sit here and work on it for the next three years, and you're still not going to come to anybody anything perfect, and you're not going to satisfy all the people, regardless what you do. We can't keep on losing money, the city's money that we are spending, and it's not, other people not have enough guts to raise it up, just paying for what it's costing. We're not making a profit. We'll probably still be losing money. And...
Based on the numbers last year, this will get us a little bit above the break-even.
And if we start running a cutoff every two months, and if we increase, you know...
We're doing it tomorrow.
If, you know, if we increase the deposit for the rental properties, which is what I understand that we have the most problems on with bills being left, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that we can do also. And I, again, I'm not saying that we don't need to increase it, I'm just saying I'm not sure that everything didn't need to go hand in hand and, and work together.
Okay, that's all I have for tonight. If, if there's no other business tonight, we'll need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Thank you.